Welcome to the Town and Northwood Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, May 20th, 2019, 6:30. The roll call is as follows: We have Matt Fowler, uh, the voting designation is Matt Fowler, Justin Miller, Brenda DiMaggio, and Vice Chair Tom Sanderson. We also have Board Administrator Linda Smith, Land Use Secretary Susan Austin, and Town Planner James Burton. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
If so, any corrections, alterations, or motions?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Um, before we call the first case, we have a ton of cases tonight. Is everybody okay with it 9:30? We need to stop where we are, and if we don't make it through all of the cases, we all have to get up and work in the morning. I know that puts a damper on some people's plans, but we're gonna do the best we can to get through everybody today, fast as we can. Also, keep in mind, when I call the cases up, we have a four-person board, supposed to have five, so if anybody's uncomfortable with a four-person board, um, we can also postpone and hopefully have five members at some point. That being said...
Mr. Chairman, I'm stepping away from the table for the first case.
Sure. First case, 19-2 Unified Properties, 1446 New Hampshire Turnpike. Come on. I got a cavity.
I can.
Do you do your own? Maybe after they give their...
Sure.
After them, and then I'll open it up to a butter's. Welcome.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Nice to see you guys again. I'm Attorney Matt Shoemaker, I represent Unified Properties, Nathan Cowes with Unified Properties, he's managing member. This is Fred Vega with us, he's the property owner of 1446, uh, first New Hampshire Turnpike. Nathan is in a proposed purchase of the property, so he's appearing under authorization from Fred, but luckily Fred was able to join us tonight to help us. Um, so, for you tonight, we have an application for, uh, appeal for equitable waiver from the setback requirements. Um, last time we met with you, we got a variance on residential density. It was not brought to our attention at that time that we were, we were also have been denied for setbacks, so we did not have the opportunity to present that to you at that time. Uh, so, uh, in communication, communication with James, it would suggest that maybe we should come back in this format with a request for equitable waiver, um, and that's why this application's before you.
Alright. Are there any abutters present that would like to make a statement? Smith?
I'd like to make a statement after the discussion on the FBN.
Okay.
I'd like to hear what's in mind.
Do you want me to go more in depth with what we're...
Sure.
Would be a good time to sort of frame the process. Um, so, this was something that I sort of had in the back of my mind the last time I was here, that I thought of when I was preparing for, um, the ZBA meeting on the, uh, variance that I hadn't noticed before, and that was that Northwood has two different setback requirements. The standard one is 20 feet for all uses, for the most part, except for large-scale businesses or multifamily. By adding a third residential unit, um, this proposal went from a mixed use with a commercial space and a two-unit residence to a multifamily or multi-unit residence of three or more. Um, the setback for that is 50 feet. So, in a sense, where, um, there was a pre-existing non-conforming setback due to the age of the building, the age of the historic development pattern on the lots, um, we were faced with a scenario where, um, it could be interpreted that, uh, an increase in setback, even though the building wasn't moving closer to the lot line, was increasing the non-conformity. Um, so, I didn't want to bring that up in the middle of a discussion on a different issue on the variance until I had a chance to speak with the building inspector about it. Um, but I did confirm, um, in the two or three days between the zoning board meeting and the planning board meeting, um, when we were discussing the site plan, that yes, he felt that that was something that should be addressed, that was something that was not included in the original denial of permit letter that led to the variance the last time. Um, and it was something that, um, as it wasn't a use concern, it was only a dimensional concern about where things were located on the lot, we felt that, uh, an equitable waiver was the more appropriate, um, means of granting relief in this case. Um, there are different criteria for granting an equitable waiver, um, and in that case, it can only be in issues that are dimensional issues, not use issues. Um, the first is that the violation was not noticed or discovered, um, by any owner, former, former owner, agent, municipal official, et cetera, until after a structure in violation had been substantially completed. Um, we felt, given the age of this structure, that that was met, um, or until after a lot or other division of land in violation, um, has been subdivided by conveyance. Uh, the second criteria, that a violation was not an outcome of ignorance of the law or ordinance, failure to inquire, obfuscation, misrepresentation, or bad faith on the part of any owner, owner's agent, or representative, but was instead caused by either a good-faith error in measurement or calculation made by an owner or owner's agent, or by an error in ordinance interpretation or applicability made by a municipal official in the process of issuing a permit over which that official had authority. Um, so, in this case, we felt that the applicant came to us in good faith and asked for, um, you had the full series of relief and permits and permissions that they would need to move forward with this project, um, and it was, uh, an error on staff's part to omit the issue of sep-, uh, the increasing setback requirement. Number three, that the physical or dimensional violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance, nor diminish the value of any other property in the area, nor interfere with or adversely affect any present or permissible future uses of any such property. And then number four, that due to the degree of past construction or investment made in ignorance of the facts constituting the violation, the cost of correction so far outweighs any public benefit to be gained, that it would be inequitable to require the violation to be corrected. So, those are the four criteria that you are considering, um, this application against tonight. The one other thing that I wanted, um, to mention on the record, since the last time there was some discussion about, um, in that case, we were discussing residential density, and whether the quote, the code could have been complied with if the properties had been subdivided differently, or if there had been a boundary line adjustment. Um, in this case, due to the proximity of an abutting structure on the other side of the property line, any adjustment to the property line to make this more conforming would make the abutting property, um, either become non-conforming, or where it's already non-conforming, become more non-conforming. Um, and the property line in question, um, that property was not in joint ownership by Mr. Vega, so even if that approach had been feasible, um, that would have involved bringing another party into the issue.
Thank you.
So, we're looking at two points here, one of them is the corner of the barn to the abutters property, 13.9 feet, and to the front at 15.4, and both of those structures are existing for a long, long time.
I would say there's also a third.
Is there a third?
Being the 43.7 from the existing dwelling to the side, because the setback would now be 50 feet.
And these are not porches?
Uh...
Because if it was a porch, that would, you know, technically, would that count as part of the measurement, or from the porch or from the building wall?
It's a building.
From the building wall, thank you. Alright. Any more questions?
No, I don't have any.
You see, you've roped off with the, the septic tank failure and, uh, from keeping people driving on that, so that's good.
So, I've never done one of these before, we just go through the questions, have them answered, just like it would be a regular...
Unless the abutter wants to speak at this point.
I'd just like to say on the record that I have no objection.
Amateur.
Just like to say on the record, I have no objection to the request, and that I think it would be reasonable for the board to approve the request.
What I'll do is I'll just go through, um, you know, does the request involve dimensional requirements, not a use restriction? Yes. Two-way, explain how the violation has existed for 10 years or more with no enforcement action, including written notice being commenced by the town. So, a, as was previously stated, this building has been here for quite some time, uh, and it predates the current duration of the ordinance, so this property was validly non-conforming up to this point, just this change of use that's necessitated us complying with the current ordinance. Explain how the non-conformity does not constitute a nuisance, or diminish the value, or interfere with future uses of the property in the area. So, again, because we're not changing the structure at all, this property has been existing like this for quite some time, uh, it's gonna have no different impact on the abutters or the general public. And explain how the cost of correction far outweighs any public benefit to be gained. Well, the, the cost of correction would be to take a wrecking ball for the property, so we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, for him to move it, so...
The previous criteria of the other variance granted will still be in effect?
Correct, this would change any conditions of approval.
Do we need to restate those, um, criteria again with the second exception?
I don't believe so. Um, they, they would still be binding on the variance.
Okay.
Um, and I think that, to the extent that they were related to the intensity of the residential use, I think they're more appropriately, um, tied only to the use and not to a dimensional aspect.
Alright, I have no other question.
I don't have any questions.
No question.
I don't have any questions either, is there, is there a motion?
I make a motion to grant the exception, uh, to equi-, excuse me, the equitable waiver dimensional requirements, uh, Article 4, Section 5, oh, Section 4. Article 4, Section 5.
On me?
Yeah, go ahead. Article 4, Section B4, um, of the zoning ordinance permit to permit the exception to the, um, frontage? No, the setback. To the setback. The secretary will make all the little corrections on that.
I'll second that. I have a motion, and I have a second, is there any discussion?
Oh, I mean, I think it's the only way to go, I mean, if we were to deny this, it's a hardship for them, but, I mean, you just can't do anything with it, so, I mean, so they're not moving anything, it's just something that, you know, they overlook.
It's a formality.
Yeah, it's just...
So, and has, he was going over the criteria, they met every...
Yeah, right, absolutely.
So, I don't think there's...
Right on.
So, no other discussion, Sam, how do you vote?
I vote in favor granting the exception.
Justin?
In favor.
I also am in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Case 19, dash 3, Jonathan Kerry White, 55, Rand Road, MAP 102, Lot 22.
Good, how are you? Great.
So, what we'll have to do is state your name, and then give us a five-minute overview of why you're here.
Sure thing. So, I'm Jonathan White, um, this property is our year-round home, and, um, it is, um, it's in need of some work, um, so we are doing some renovations that have been approved, and, um, we're replacing a section of, well, the kitchen and a section of a three-season porch, and right now, it's approved to replace in kind, but, um, because we have some concerns with snow load, there's a 12-foot shed roof on the kitchen, and it's a very slight pitch, so it just, it's completely sagged, so we're in the middle of demoing that at this point. Um, and then there's another section on the other side that is, um, currently three-season porch that we're also demoing, and we'd like to go up with that to make that two floors, so that I can, um, I work from home, so that I can have an office above there, and then the other section would be to increase some storage space, because there is no basement down below.
Wasn't any construction on a private road, isn't, he already has permission to do...
You already have building permits for this.
I have building permits.
Correct. For everything, are you asking?
I'm, I'm asking for the increase in volume to expand upward.
Increase in volume.
Everything else was approved, it's just to increase that, and one thing to note, there, there are no neighbors on the other side of the street, it's all wooded, so I wouldn't be blocking anyone's view.
Increase in volume, because we're looking at the paperwork on this 67441 and 42. So, I'm a little confused that I didn't see a height mentioned here, as far as height of the building? I know it's in your plans, but I'm trying to find my references, and the idea of a appeal of the RSA 67441, so I just need clarity there, and then it drops to 67442. So, I'm just confused on the paperwork, so it's not more of an administrative question?
Yeah, I need to explain.
Status of existing plating statutes? So, the paperwork we're looking at is this, the appeal for the 67441, it says on top, and then on the very first line, it goes to RSA 67442. So, I'm confused between 67441, which is your road, and this...
And the second page, let's pop over the cover, it starts with RSA 67442. That's a, some kind of typo, that's not...
Yeah, so I got a 41 on top, I got a 42 on the next line, kicking in a, uh, 67414 and 15, so I'm confused what I'm doing.
Well, that's one of your applications, so you're the first person in seven years that's noticed that, thank you, we'll change that.
I did my homework. Um, so, the 67442 is plating statutes?
No, this has nothing to do with that, it's 674...
So, it's 67441, so, on the paperwork, it's 41, and so we're looking at the, um, road surface here, and this is what we were discussing before, is that normally, it goes to the board, but the 1415 allows for it to come here direct?
A person has a choice, they can do one of two things, they can go to the, uh, get approval under 67441 in the beginning section of that statute through the Board of Selectment, or they can opt to come directly to the zoning board and appeal it based on the criteria in the statute, which the state has given you authority to review and determine. Uh, some people opt to go to Board of Selectment first, and then if they do that, they can appeal it to this board, but it's not, it's not required that they do it that way. Basically, his situation is, um, I, my understanding is, everything is, is within the same footprint, but there's, and so the building inspector felt that in order to, uh, be able to issue a, a building permit to do, uh, additional work, volume, in this case, even on the same footprint, that it would come under that statute where you have to look at the access to the, to the property.
So...
To be clear, it's not about the construction, because the building instructor did not deny it for that.
Right, it's not about the height.
It's simply on the road itself, and the access.
Alright, that's what I thought, because looking at the, uh, the 41, that's, that's the infamous road one, and the private road with criteria, which brings you to the applicant providing, um, paperwork from your road association.
Correct.
I chuckled at first, because it was 19, uh, um, or was it?
1956.
And I said, "What?" So, they went digging, so 1956, and we got another letter here from 1957, two days before my birthday, I might add, um, and I have nothing, what do I have current for a president's letter?
There is a letter from the president, yeah.
So, this is maintained with the association, you all contribute, is there funds, I mean, do you, um, it's just basically plowing, or grading, or...
Grading is the, the primary piece of it, but there's also, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I, when I, I was unclear what we were looking at at first when I was down there on the site review, so I looked at the building, and the construction, and the water, and everything else, and, so I can't say that I paid extra special look at the road, because we don't usually do the 41s, um, but I felt that, um, I felt confident on that road, that it wasn't, um, too narrow, you're, you're straight in, you're the right, and you're, what, maybe 200 feet down on the right, um, is there a hammerhead or any turn on Rand Road? It's like, if I took a fire truck...
Like a turnaround?
Yeah, if I took a fire truck down there, how would I get out off of Rand Road?
Absolutely, there's a, um, there is where it splits, there could be, it could be backed up into the other side, so there's White Drive.
Gotcha.
And then there's Rand Road goes to the right, so it could be backed up into White Drive.
Did anybody notice that?
I did, actually, yep. I've been down there quite a bit, and actually, that road is, as far as private roads in the Town of Northwood.
Good condition.
Really good road, and with the paperwork and the historical value of the association that has a lot, you should be considered...
And you have other seasonal dwellers, or, uh, excuse me, year-round dwellers beyond you?
I'm the last.
You're the last, okay.
Yeah, so I'm the next, so the next person, my next-door neighbor is a year-round resident, I'm another, and then everyone beyond.
Okay, and your next-door neighbor's relatively close, so, yeah, yeah. Okay, I think that's, that's it for my questions, you've, you've supplied the paperwork, um, and you understand that the town, um, does not bear liability or responsibility for maintenance of, of that road.
And I think they're signed for that.
And, yeah, there is a, well, a liability waiver of signing the 67441.
This is signed one, yeah?
So, what I'd like to do is I'll, I'll read these two questions, and then, for the record, or it's four, and for the record, if you just read them out loud.
Sure.
Enforcement of the frontage standard would entail practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship.
Alright, so the home is currently a year-round residence for our family, there's an association in place which maintains the road in contract for plowing, the contract for plowing, the driveway was in place through the winter and will continue indefinitely, the expansion of the second floor does not increase the footprint, or the number of bedrooms, and would, um, only allow for additional storage space with an office which would enable me to work from home. Without the office, there is, um, there would be great difficulty in working from home, where the home does not have a basement, the additional storage is required to support the family's need, posing another practical difficulty. Both existing roof lines are built without foundations using a shed-style roof construction, um, where our proposed design involves using a foundation with a new gable rafter, um, design which meets current codes for snow load, not being allowed to improve the roof line could cause significant risk, uh, for roof failure.
The, um, the circumstances of the case do not require the building or structure to be related to the existing or proposed streets.
The proposed expansion would, um, not change the already-present relationship to the existing streets, where we are currently living in the home, however, the proposed added office space would yield an increase in my ability to work from home, reducing travel on the town roads and the related private road.
The erection of the building will not tend to distort the official map or increase the difficulty of carrying out the master plan.
The second floor expansion will not impact the master plan or the official map, there will be no impact to existing footprint, not increasing travel on any town roads, and my children are already in the Northwood Elementary School. This permitted expansion would increase our taxes paid to the town without changing the services we use, we have 200 feet of frontage on Rand Road, um, we meet all required setbacks enforced by the town by more than double the distance.
An erection of the building will not cause hardship to future purchasers or undue financial impact to the municipality.
Alright, so this project is not expanding the direction of the lake and does not increase the overall height of the structure, there are no residences across the street that would be impacted or blocked from viewing the pond, and we meet all setback requirements, the construction of the new gables would improve snow load capacity, um, of those areas, as well as depth of insulation, only helping future purchasers. As stated, the municipality will not be burdened further by this expansion, where the number of bedrooms and inhabitants will not be increased, and the road maintenance will continue to be handled by the association. I hope that actually answered the questions, it was a little confusing.
At this point, are there any abutters present that would like to make a statement? Or have any questions? Do you have any questions?
Uh, designated as year-round use or seasonal?
Year-round.
Year-round tax, thank you.
Somebody in the association takes care of the roads, now, do, now, do they just kind of take a look at the road and grade it and take care of it as needed, let's say, like, when I went there the other day, you know, we had all the rain, and just, uh, right outside your property there, you know, they dropped the bobcat off, I think, that day.
Yeah.
There was some divots on the side of the road that were obviously wet, so I would assume after construction, they'll probably come back by and, you know, try to take care of that.
That's a great question, so the, um, so the president of the association actually lives at the end of the road, and he does, um, he has equipment to maintain it.
Okay.
Obviously, yeah, when, when the construction kind of damage is done, he'll go, he'll come back through, um, he travels it quite frequently.
Yep. Alright. If there's no questions, is there a motion?
Do you want to read this? Well, let me take a stab at it, so you guys covered the, the error. Um, I make a motion to accept the appeal, RSA 67441, Section 2, um, simple as that.
Having met all criteria.
Having met all criteria, showing, um, road association intact, um, and understanding the, um, non-town maintenance and a liability factor, releasing, I don't know, the town from liability.
Alright, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'll just, you know, submit to that, yeah, with the history of the road association, that's what the town is looking for, they're looking for, um, some promise that when we send a vehicle down...
If there's no questions, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Do you want to read this? Well, let me take a stab at it, so you guys covered the, the error. I make a motion to accept the appeal, RSA six seventy-four forty-one, section two. Simple as that?
Having met all criteria.
Having met all criteria, showing road association intact, and understanding the non-town maintenance and a liability factor, releasing, I don't know, the town from liability.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I, I'll just, you know, submit to that, yeah, with the history of the road association, that's what the town is looking for. They're looking for some promise that when we send a vehicle down there, they can get back out.
Right.
Or they can make it to the residence. So having that is really important, and the condition that, and the spot check while we were doing this, the, the road looked in good shape. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we're zipping. Case nineteen-four.
Yep, now it's gonna go all night.
Twenty-two Lower Camp Road. Lot one twenty-four, lot eleven. Applicant seeks to renovate the existing home and requests the following, a variance from Article Four, Section A, lot size. Where it does not meet the zoning ordinance, the lot has point three-five acres, where two are required.
They're doing well. If I could just make a statement, there was an error made in the public notice. I have notified the, the applicant, and the, there is a variance request for both frontage and lot size, and only lot size was noticed, so we can act on that tonight if they would like to go forward with that, and then continue, well, we still have to renotice, I mean, not renotice, we'd have to notice, but you can, depending on the decision tonight, and if you decide something tonight, we'll just notice it for the next time.
Okay.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You guys want to state your name and?
Scott Franklitz from Brown Engineering Surveying.
John Getman.
All right. I can run through a little quick, I guess, smaller plans too, with the proposed conditions, if you're the same thing that you probably opened up, so.
Yeah.
But, like you said, it's a small lot that was existing nineteen eighty-two, was approved by the planning board, Lower Camp Road on Lucas Pond Road. It's point three-five acres, where two acres is required, and the frontage is one hundred and seventeen point five, where two hundred is, or one hundred and fifty is now required. Currently on the property is an existing house with a bunkhouse behind it. Their, the intent is to connect the two and raise it and put a foundation under it. Right now, it's on, on pilings and different forms of foundation. So they're, they're trying to improve it. It meets all the setbacks, the twenty-foot setback from the property lines. They're not going out towards the property lines anymore, they're kind of just filling in a spot right now that's a depth. And they'll be putting a new septic in and a new well in as well, which are in the process. So the variance is, I can speak just to the very area one, because that's what was noticed, but we are asking for two of them. Area is point three-five, where two acres is, is required, and the frontage, that one seventeen-five, where one fifty is. So there is a road association in place. It wasn't able to get any paperwork on it, but there's several abutters here that, that live on the road as well, and there's a lot of, I guess, whole year-round residents that live on Lower, Lower Camp Road. John can probably speak more to the association than I can, but there is one that is in place.
You want to do a round of questions first, or? Uh, sure. Do you have any building or sketches of what it is you intend to do? I, you know, in walking the site and seeing the idea of the foundation raising up, so you get like a area of the building that's in the ground, so to speak, and I'm looking at your, your slope here, and I wondered if we were running into any slope situations, and whether or not you intended to raise the foundation above that ditch that is around the backside, and also that existing building, whether there were changes or what was going on with that, whether you're, you're going with something in kind, or if you're, you're looking at, you know, doing, 'cause that, that almost looks like a back-out building, so I'm just wondering about connecting to it. My concern is creating an additional building or connection there, making it bigger on a small lot, so you'd be in non-conformance, and by putting in a, building size on it would create further non-conformance. So I'd have a question on that, what the, what the intention is of the improvement. In one location, it mentioned estimated cost of one thousand dollars, so I, I was like, "What?"
I think that's missing a zero.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, you know, "Really?" So, so I have that question on kind of a, what it is that, that we're looking at here for that additional building space. I'm also looking at the denial for it not being a year-round home, being a seasonal designation, and so that's, that's part of the criteria too, is for a small seasonal camp on the point three-five existing and existing footing, that's kind of what it is. And once we get bigger, and it's still in seasonal, I believe, is that true by tax map? The denial of the building permit said that the proposed use would be single-family, but it's always been a seasonal camp, not a single-family home. So that's kind of a sticking point on expansion, because these small lots were intended for small camps. So looking at that, and, yeah, looking at slope, just wondering, 'cause if you're going in to put a foundation there on slope, are we running into an issue, an issue there with slope?
I don't think there's any grading, so I guess-
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure of the question. There's an existing house there-
It's steep, yeah.
... to raise up for a foundation under.
And that, well, the question is how high, and, I'm trying to get it in my mind.
So basically, that first structure that you see?
Yes.
That would be the second floor. That's how it meets up to the house. We're gonna fill in, we will fill in that middle portion, so that it's a square building. The bunkhouse will be actually part of the second floor. So when you see from the road, we won't be going up, that will be the, the height of the second floor.
Oh, okay. Kind of picturing it, except that your foundation's down below, and the earth kind of curls around that backside like a trench. So you're talking about a foundation in there, will it, is it changing height on this? Is it coming up higher? 'Cause it's almost like the, the structure meets the ground.
Yeah, there, there will be some retaining wall put in there to-
Retaining wall, okay.
... attack some of that. But we're not planning on bringing it up any higher than whatever the building inspector's requiring.
Will you yield questions for a minute?
So Chairman, I have a question, if I could ask it. You referred to that existing building as a bunkhouse?
That's what it was listed when we bought it. I don't know what the real term is.
Let me ask this, because I know something came up recently, and it could be a different property than this, where there was a former zoning board approval, where a, a home was built on a lot that had a small cabin on it that was referred to as a bunkhouse, that the variance was conditioned on that bunkhouse being converted to storage only. Are you aware of this, is any history on this?
I haven't seen it.
Property?
It's not on my property.
Hmm?
It's not on my property.
Okay, it, it could be another, we have a lot of small camps on the lake, and I know, I'll go check my thing, just to confirm that it is not this property.
I almost came off.
I didn't realize that was a bunkhouse. Is there a number of bedrooms on that? I guess I would ask that. Is it two-bedroom?
Existing, too.
The board may need to know.
Yeah, it's only, the state's only gonna approve a two-bedroom septic on it. It's gonna be a two-bedroom house.
Okay.
I've kind of jumped in off of what Pam said. With them doing construction there in that middle part, does that have anything to do with the grade, the steep slopes?
I don't know if-
There is going to drop.
I'm just referring to the fact that if there was a steep slope issue, then that would have been brought up by the-
Right, I don't know if, it may have overlooked it though, that's the thing, you know, that's, I mean, when I looked at it, it is the, the whole yard just straight down to, to the pond there.
Yeah.
Or lake. So you-
But that would be a separate, that would be a separate variance.
That'd have to be a separate variance, right. So the, the bunkhouse, existing building there? The height that is, that's the height everything's gonna be?
I believe so, yes. I don't have a foundation plan in place yet.
Yeah.
The intent is, that is the height.
So just, you just clarify, are you putting a foundation under the existing building? Both of the buildings and doing that?
The entire structure.
The whole thing? You're gonna lift the house up, put the foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
Including that bunkhouse?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Is that gonna be like a slab under the bunkhouse, or?
It will be a foundation.
Be a foundation. So you got some height there.
You guys have a second, ask for abutters?
Sure.
Any abutters that would like to speak?
Did I turn this on? Hello? It is. My name is Rick Schofield, and I am not a direct abutter, but I have a direct interest in a piece of property, which is a town right-of-way that abuts their property.
Okay.
And I've been using that right-of-way since nineteen seventy-eight, forty years. And because I have a deed in right to that, I think that gives me the, the right to make comment. So I just, I support the applicant's request for variance, just to get started. But I do have a concern that I wanted to express, and that is, has to do with the right-of-way. It's very small, it's three right-of-ways on Lucas Pond, it's the first one, as you're driving in Lower Camp Road. And it's thirty-eight, thirty-nine feet at the road frontage, and that waterfront, it's twenty-three point one feet, according to my subdivision plan. I have a copy of the original subdivision plan for that Lucas Pond development.
Yeah, I see it here as well.
And last fall, I noticed that the pin, which I've been looking at for forty years, wasn't in the same place. It was moved in, into the right-of-way by what I measure approximately three and a half to four feet. So it's now down to nineteen, it was twenty-three point one two years ago when I measured it, and now it's nineteen point five. But it doesn't seem like much, we're only talking about three feet, three and a half feet, but with a twenty-three-foot right-of-way on the water, that's like eighteen percent if you take four feet out of it, so that makes it significant in my mind.
And it's town property.
It is town property. So I plan to pursue that until we get it resolved. And I have to apologize to the Getman, because they haven't heard about this yet. I haven't had a chance to talk to them in the winter, they, they haven't been around, so my apologies, they fly inside you with this. So, anyway, that's my concern, and I've already talked to the building department about it, and they're looking into it, so. I also spoke with Scott Franklitz.
Yeah, and I can answer-
We never met personally.
And I can answer your question tonight, and it's on the plans.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I guess that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Larry Plor, ten Lower Camp Road, I'm a direct abutter. I also support their application for variance. I think they're trying to do the right things for their property, to do nothing but enhance the, the property, protect the, the environment, and give them use consistent with all other use on this, on the pond. And if there's questions on the roads, I'm a year-round on this, on this road, and can speak to the biannual meetings and the commitment of the neighborhood to maintain this private road, so, again, support their application.
We would need documentation and writing of the association's existence, right? The, that it's been registered?
Yeah, I know that they tried to make contact with the president of the association, and it must have been unsuccessful, but we can support that.
Yeah, I think they would want that in writing, that the association exists, and that it's current vital, that type of thing, and that it's ongoing.
I go to the meetings, so.
Sorry, I missed, are you a direct abutter, say?
Yes.
Where's your house located?
Ten Lo, ten Lower Camp Road, which is directly to the west.
Okay, yeah.
Right on the water. And the easement is on the other side, that's your Schofield lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
I can address the, the right-of-way. As you look at the plan, on the lower left-hand corner is what he's talking about, and you'll see the twenty-three point one, which you talked about, which is on a private plan, that was approved in nineteen eighty-two. And then you'll see another pin that's kind of closer to the wet one, that says not held, and the other one says held. If you take a tape between the granite bound that actually our company set and the pin that we found on two thousand and eleven, it's twenty-three point one feet. What he's measuring, I believe, is probably from that granite bound to that pin that's in the middle of the right-of-way, or not middle, but, but closer to the abutting property.
So it's saying thirty-nine feet?
At the right-of-way, and then if you go down at the-
And you're saying it's, it's not thirty-nine feet, it's twenty-three point one, or is it right on the upset down?
Nope, nope, nope.
Thirty-nine, I got twenty-three point one there, yeah, okay. And thirty-nine feet, and, Linda, while you were gone, one of the people that, on that town property that abuts this gentleman, I'm sorry, your name again?
I'm Mr. Schofield.
Sco, Mr. Schofield has a right-of-way on that, through that town property there, and he intimated that he, was possibility of the dimensional rod being out of place, or a question of measurement there, whether the, the right-of-way has been shortened, which would be town property, so a question there. 'Cause that would affect road frontage for sure, so that would be one little question to be cleared up.
Okay, well, the, the issue at hand is that you have a, the surveyor who is going to stand by the measurements, the only, the only recourse is to have, if the town chose to question it, they would have to hire a surveyor to question it. It's not, a layperson cannot challenge a surveyor's-
So this is Mr. Schofield?
Well, this is, it's not the road frontage.
Oh.
It's the waterfront.
Can I?
The road frontage, I think, is thirty-nine feet.
Right.
And the waterfront's twenty-three feet.
Okay.
And from the pin that was installed by Brown Engineering two, three years ago.
Oh, the what that was?
No, it wasn't Brown.
No, it wasn't.
The Martin property, which is on the other side of the right-of-way. That was surveyed two or three years ago.
The wetland to the right, the town property that abuts this property.
Right, I see all that, yeah. Where is the right-of-way?
I can explain it all to you, if you want me to. Now, you've got a copy of the plan, now, I got some larger ones here too, where you can look at that one. So as you look at the bottom of, of the plan?
Mm-hmm.
It's the town right-of-way, it's thirty-nine feet along Lower Camp Road, you see the thirty-nine along the right-of-way. And you go all the way to the left down towards the lake, you see the twenty-three point one feet. That's the twenty-one, twenty-three point one feet that he's speaking of. The bound that we installed, the granite bound, that, that has found one-four-two-nineteen, because we found it after we set it in thirteen, and then the pin, the one-inch diameter iron pin found twelve-two- pin found twelve-two, two thousand and eleven, that was the original pin we found when we surveyed, uh, the abutting property. And that's the one we held, and it matched, that's how we determined the Martin property. The pin that I think Mr. Seacare is measuring to is that other pin, one-inch diameter iron pin found one-four-nineteen, and it says not held.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's the pin I believe he's taking the tape measure to. So, we're not...
And that one's not held.
This is, this, these property lines match the original plot that was approved in nineteen eighty-two. Nothing's, nothing's getting lost, nothing's getting changed, nothing.
Okay. Could you not?
Okay, so I just, so I could understand this, Scott?
Yep.
From the granite bound, there's a dotted line, says twenty-three point one...
Yep.
To a one-inch diameter iron pipe.
Right.
I don't see that anywhere. I mean, it's on the plan, but it's not on the ground.
Well, our survey crew located it, we didn't make it up, so it's gotta be out there. I can go out and try to flag it up.
Well, it, it, for forty years, that steel pin's been sticking up out of the ground by about a foot and a half, so, and it's not there anymore.
It's not held, huh? Oh, it's not held.
I can only see, I can only tell you what I, what I, what I know. And then the other, the other issue is, if you, this lot is a hundred and two feet in width along the waterfront. But if you measure it now, it measures a hundred and seven, to that pin.
Yeah, and if you...
So, that waterfront has grown considerably, based on my map.
Can I just ask, where is your property located?
I'm at eleven Lower Camp Road, so if you drive in...
No, I mean, where do you sit on this map?
On this, uh, okay, Mr. Larry Plor's property, you see on the top?
Mm-hmm.
And you go all the way to the right, I'm kitty corn.
He's not a direct abutter, yeah.
Across the road, on the other side.
He just says, what, a right-of-way or an easement through the town property, is that what you...
That's right, it's on my deed.
It's on his deed.
Egress, egress, and for recreational purposes.
Okay.
I can speak to that frontage too, as you look at the plan, it says a hundred and two per plan?
Mm-hmm.
And he's saying a hundred and seven, as you see, there's five point two-one, that pin that is not, that's not the Getman's Corner, that he's measuring to. And you'll see on the other end too, those two pins, they're, they're about five feet off the line, is the way I determine the property. So, this plan matches the existing recorded approved nineteen eighty-two subdivision plan. And if it, and where there was some found monuments, you hold the found monuments, and there's some minor discrepancy on a little bit of a length, but, um, there's no big errors on, on the plan that should be speaking to.
Are you willing to put a stamp on the plan?
Yeah, my stamp, yeah.
Then it's, it's not, if, this gentleman would have to bring that, uh...
I, I think the answers are on the plan that he's looking for, he's just, I don't know, he, he hasn't seen this plan, so maybe once he, he looks at it for a while, I'm gonna...
You wanna look at a larger set, sir?
There's a lot of, it's like a lot of circles. Oh, yeah, this is much better. Okay, so, twenty-three point... Okay, and this is what I'm measuring to.
There are some things that need to be made, because they've come out with the frontage areas, um, to continue this one.
It was there, we found it, but we have to note it, and we didn't hold it for a property image.
Okay, so it was there?
When we, in two thousand, in January, or whenever it was, was surveyed.
I'd like to raise a building conceptual, I can't, I'm not dealing with this question.
Okay, and then it's a hundred and two here.
Right, because he's saying...
So, I'm measuring some in from here to here.
Right, you might be measuring from this right here, he's saying it's five more feet here.
All right, all I, again, and I, and I've talked to Scott several times a little, all I'm asking for is that it's correct.
Yep.
That's all I, that's all I could possibly have spoken, so.
Correct.
And if that's correct, then it is.
Right.
And it seems to me, though, that if, that original pin that was in there, that showed the twenty-three point one, should be something there.
And in two thousand and eleven, we located it, so if it's not there now, then, I mean, potentially, we should probably set something else back there.
As if there's no pin there, if there is another one there, that shows it, a lot closer.
Which is probably that, that non-hold, non-held one?
Right.
Yeah, that, and that, that's where, um, they have shrubs planted all along that line, all the way up.
Right, gotcha.
I don't object to the shrubs, I can leave those, that's a lot of it, it's just that I wanna make sure that everybody knows exactly the width of that right-of-way.
Right, so if that pin isn't there, if we, if someone's to discover that that pin isn't there, they notify the town, the town would have to have somebody go out and put that pin, reestablish that pin, right? Or... I'm not sure, yeah, I mean, somebody would have, have to hire somebody to establish that.
And so the little shrubs are, in your opinion, the little shrubs are over in the town property, into, they're into the town property.
But that, that's not, in a sense, anyway, I'm just trying to...
No, we just got some nice shrubs, for the town, but, yeah, that would be a question. So, other questions, I mean, beyond?
You know, for him to bring this up is a good thing, because we need to stay on top of this, but as far as we're concerned, we can note this, and you're in the record for questioning this, but, um, as far as this meeting in this case, we have to just, um, focus on the point three-five acres and addition. We're getting a little off track, rightly so, but we gotta get back, and it'll be noted in the town.
All right.
And I don't know if, do we pass this on to somebody else to take a look at it, or?
I, well...
You're already talking to him, right?
Yeah, Charlie Smart is already looking into it.
Cool, okay. All right.
So, that's, that's been taken care of. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
I, I think the issue was, if, if there's a surveyor's stamp on the plan, it's not likely that the town is going to hire, I mean, I don't know, unless they had a reason to, hire someone to dispute that.
So, back on the point three-five acres, um, we'll, we'll need to ask the five questions, of course.
Not yet, please?
Nope.
I think you're, um...
Not yet.
I, I, I'm at the point where we've got some additional information needed before we get to the five questions, um, such as the road association paperwork, the, um, building conceptualization, just rough, not a, you know, blueprints, anything like that.
They are coming back for road frontage.
And they are coming back for the, um, for the frontage. So, I'm just wondering if it would be worthwhile to offer, uh, a continuance on the lot size, uh, to resolve some of those questions, um, and there's also the question of seasonal status, um, as a, a seasonal camp, um, and the likelihood of increasing, uh, volume upon a point three-five acre lot, so I would have that question, so I, I, I do have some questions that, um, and as, we don't have the road association paperwork, where, um, I would probably be leaning towards, um, doing a continuance on this to meet up with the road frontage at next meeting, which we have to do also. Any dialogue on that?
I still have a question on seasonal. You know, what, are you and I fishermen, or do you fish in the summer?
I have a Florida...
I, I think that now that all, any time a building is being built, it's gonna be built up to code for year-round residence.
But it has to obtain that, um, what is it, it's a separate application? To go from seasonal to, um, year-round?
My understanding right now, uh, is that there are some legal questions relative to seasonal versus year-round, and I will defer to the building inspector.
So, we have questions on that for clarity, on seasonal versus year-round? And also, that would touch into the idea of building here, 'cause it doesn't, it doesn't appear that that building would be year-round at this point, not as it stands. I don't, I, I don't think you'd wanna winter.
My understanding is, at this point in time, we cannot, uh, because we do not have specific criteria of definitions, that we cannot address that. It's not part of this, it hasn't been asked, so I think we need to set that aside.
Well, it's logged into the, it's, it's part of their denial, so, once the...
It is part of the denial?
Once the inspector listed, it's part of the denial, um, and, you know, as it's part of the denial, um, we've got to, we've got to, you know, have that in there, that, uh, first, our records show that this dwelling has always been assessed as a seasonal camp, not a single-family home on the permit, the proposed use would be single-family home. In doing so, this requires you to fill out change of use form, uh, also requires state-approved septic system design, along with appropriate scaled plot plan, showing all setbacks, which we do have the, is scaled, but we do not have the stamp and signature, um, upon the, uh, the plan, um, so...
Okay, let me clarify, this was written in September of twenty eighteen. The applicant can come in and ask for any portion of this that they would want, hopefully they would, and, and they, they did make an attempt to ask, although it was all done on one sheet rather than on two, but we will need that as a separate, uh, variance request for the frontage versus...
Right, right, they, and they have, they've exercised their right to, to come here tonight, um, and I think, for me, I'm saying, I don't have enough information, uh, to make, if I made a decision based on the information I have, it might not be the decision they want, so it would perhaps be a, a situation of more, more information, and, and dotting those i's, as far as the, uh, road pa, uh, paperwork, and also this concept of the point three-five acres and the one-one-seven, we face them all together with the stamp and everything.
I don't think we're going to address the issue with the stamp, uh, because that's something that would be, uh, have to be brought forward to the board of selectmen for their determination whether or not they felt that there was some reason to question, uh, a, a surveyor's stamp, as they felt that they were aware that this was, uh, somehow taking part of the town's property, uh, but I, I'm not sure they're going to address that, before next month, or...
I'm gonna have one of those mic drop moments and say, as a taxpayer in the town of Northwood, I would be concerned about maintenance of town property.
Well, in, I, I can get into it a little bit, but ironically, I have been looking into this issue of, and I believe this is one of the three lots that are still owned by the town of Northwood, that was part of the Lucas Pond conveyance from leased lots to sale of lots. My understanding, which I didn't realize in the beginning, and it's, I, I guess, it's just, either they knew and that it, it was great, or it's ironic that they were lucky, but, uh, this is leased land, it's not owned land, uh, is that correct?
No, I own this land.
Oh, well then it wasn't updated on our, it says leased still on the, on the property, correct? You did, I didn't look, I just looked to see if...
I don't think there's many left out there that are...
I didn't think there was hardly any, but, I thought, it still said leased.
One directly across the street from...
The empty lot is town. Right, and isn't this an empty lot?
It's a water, it's a water runoff, it's a, um, I would say for road drainage, and for, um, it's, it's, it's definitely a water run-through there type piece of, of, um, property, where, um, I would say the town probably has it, because it is, uh, wetland designation, and it is, it would be necessary for, um, for drainage into the lake.
There's a history, all of these lots were leased lots, the town owned them, they were set up many, many years ago to be camp lots. Back in about two thousand, there was a decision, uh, to look into legally whether these little lots could be, uh, sold to the people that were leasing them, that had ninety-nine-year leases. The attorneys came back and said, yes, you know, under these, you know, blah, 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 did all the legal research, can convey them to the, those folks. There was a Warren article, and ironically, I was, I sent an email to the attorney this morning about not even realizing this was, you know, part of this, uh, that that lot might have been part of it, but there were several lots that were not owned or leased to anyone, and the roadways, there was a Warren article in two thousand and two for the town to convey the roadways and the, uh, those lots to Lucas Pond Association. I was unable to find that that ever occurred, because they're still shown as town exempt properties. What I don't know is, and I, and now this is all just happening now, so I haven't even brought it to the, the town administrator or the board of selectmen, what I think happened was, was as they were selling these lots over a period of years, the deeds were all being conveyed, that the board of selectmen intend to, you know, the, the Warren article was approved by the, by the voters, to give them, the selectmen, the right to convey this to the association, because that was their plan. They want, the, the roads are private, it was part of the condition of the sales when people bought them, but we still own them now, so I think at some point in the future, it's likely that the town, depending on how the selectmen feel about it, they may take these few standing lots that are left, that are open lots, such as that little one beside them, and the roadways, and convey it to the association, because that was the original intent. Whether or not that happens, you know, I, I don't know, but we are looking, you know, all of this was raised because we were looking into the list of town exempt properties, and trying to determine, this was through the conservation commission, whether or not, uh, there were any particular lots that the conservation commission would, wanted to, send a note, or put a note in the file to the selectmen not to sell those lots. And in so doing, I started seeing the history of how those lots, uh, didn't make sense, because, and then looked back, and I found the Warren article saying that they were to be conveyed to the association, but because the sale of the lots occurred over a period of years, my guess is, it slipped through the cracks, and a few years later, it, it just, I, I'm assuming that the, the Lucas Pond Association is an existing association today, but it wasn't when the Warren article was originally created to convey it to them, it was kind of in the early stages of coming together, so, uh, the importance, I, I guess that's a lot said about the importance of this, because it may end up being conveyed to that association, and I, and, and I don't know how many of those people's deeds, I think the majority of them probably have the right to use those lots, or to use them as a right-of-way. I mean, this gentleman, I think they all do as well, so...
We all have deeds that say that we have the right to use those three rights-of-way.
Correct, I think, 'cause I was looking at, I pulled up three or four of them today, and they all did, so, I can assume that it was a condition of every single sale of a, of a lot.
It, it was, and we had the leases also, I mean, it was part of the lease, we had those right-of-ways.
Right, some of them, right.
If we didn't have waterfront, if we were on the backside of the road, the town wanted everybody in that subdivision to have access to the pond, and so they gave them the rights-of-way. But the other lots, and, probably getting out of my area here, but the other lots, there are other vacant lots, that were never sold or developed, they've just been empty lots, I don't know if that was...
Owned by the town, or owned by somebody else?
I think they're still owned by the town.
I believe that's the three lots.
That's the three lots that she's referring to.
Yeah.
Oh, but there's other ones, though, that were never developed, like the one that was acquired by the town.
Oh, 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 you're talking about that, that's conservation land, that's designated town forest. Yes, that will not, yeah, that, it will always be retained by the town, once it's designated... Yes, that will not, yeah, that will always be retained by the town, once it's designated town forest.
Yeah, that's only at the start.
Right. But that's a big roundabout to say, not that anybody wanted to hear the whole history, but I am definitely going to go forward to the Selectmen and bring this information to them to see if now they, the association is in existence, whether it would be reasonable just to convey it to them. They all have the right to use it, they, they're taking care of the road.
And the only drawback to that would be that wetland there that is a drainage into Lucas Pond. So Conservation might say, no, they want to keep that, because that is a very wet drainage spot.
Well, I don't know if they would, because if, all those folks have a right to cross over that?
Well, they walk on the side, they're obviously not down in the trench there, going through, you know. So, it is a, yeah, it's a deep water runoff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's not like, I couldn't figure out how they even get there.
Yeah, it's, I imagine, to walk down through, you have to kind of skirt the edges of that deep, and there's near constant flow through that?
Almost, oh, you're...
Yeah. Yeah, and again, I would just caution, with the shrubberies there, that it is a wetland, so you just can't cut it and do stuff like that. But I see clarity here, although you did muddy it a bit by saying that you still had it listed as leased. So, I'd want clarity there, that she has her deed and all that.
Well, most notes on the assessing plans are only notes, sometimes they're never taken off, so... I mean, I could look in a second and tell you, I mean, he's saying he owns it, then he owns it.
A deed says I own it anyways.
I believe it, it's just a question of the town record.
I mean, I, we list it by the owner because of the building, but the lands, you know, there was people that would show the owner, but it would say it was, it was under a lease. I have no reason to dispute what he's saying.
To rally back, we have more, we have one more question about the bunkhouse.
Yeah, I was just curious about the bunkhouse. Is it considered an accessory dwelling unit? Is it a permanent structure? Looks like it has plumbing and electricity to it.
Yeah, it's got a bed in it, it's bunk.
On the bunkhouse, did you find anything?
It just, as far as what it is, it just lists a 16-by-20 cab, oh.
You went to go see if it was a story, okay.
No, that was not it, that's another problem.
That's what you left the room for.
It's different.
Okay.
So you'd like some more information?
I would, and as they are coming back in next meeting for the road frontage variance, perhaps a little more information. And then we got the 117, and perhaps with mindful consideration, you know, you've got that right-of-way there and all that, so... And I, normally with these undersized lots, we do have a conceptualization of what the building idea is, so that we have an idea of elevation height, that type of improvement. So, I'm just remembering the tiny one that was over on one of the other roads there. It was a very small lot, yeah, much half of this size. And, but we had, you know, the structure, so we had an image of what was trying to go in there, and it was a very tall structure, it turned out to be.
I'm just a detailed person, I'm sorry. Can't think of anything else, and it really won't stop you from moving forward, because we have to get the road frontage put together anyway, so...
Has the state septic been approved?
Not approved yet. Well, I've done tests, I've got a feeling they're already done.
So we'll make that a condition if it's not, but it might be by the time...
Yeah, the plan is to get both that and the shoreline permit in before...
Shoreline permit, yeah.
It'll be, yeah, just impacting around a building and the septic for the shoreline permit. Do you know the dimensions of that addition you want to do?
It is 380 square feet, I know that, I don't know that...
I think the building is 22 wide, so it'd be 22 by, 22 by 14.
All right, thank you. And the majority of that area is a deck right now, there's kind of a deck between the buildings.
Yeah.
It's a unique setup. Normally, to say the least. Yeah, normally, if we were talking about an addition on a small lot like this, I don't, it would have to be an extremely rare circumstance that we would ever even consider something like that, but I think because these two buildings are existing, and you're gonna put a foundation under it, I mean, once we see the plans, or, you know, even maybe some rough elevation concepts, we can take a look at it, but it makes sense why you're combining the two.
Right, and it's no question it would be an improvement, so, and having the septic and your, where's your leach, leach, leach field going to be?
It's gonna be way up at the...
Way up at top, right? And the septic is going up there. Over here, I see it says existing well to be disconnected. So, let's see, where's your well and your well radius?
There's a well, it's gonna be somewhere, I think, over here, on the second page, it shows a proposed one.
I knew, I saw it before, because I walked it. I got you, I got the radius right there. Now, this, it, it doesn't matter that the 75-foot well radius goes into the water, that's fine, as long as it's not onto developable property and stuff?
Undevelopable property in the state.
And you're also beyond the town property there, you're coming out into the other abutters, so your 70, your 75-foot radius is over into that abutters' property?
On these small lots, what you do have to do now is a well release, which we'll have to submit for the septic design. They get, make it to the well release.
Setback, limited disturbance, existing building. Yeah, so my, my feeling is, I'd like to ask you, Mr. Chairman, if you would consider offering the applicant the opportunity for a continuance to next meeting, and at this point, they would be first on the agenda, and they would have the ability at that time to do both the lot size and the frontage, and get through the five questions, right, on one?
And they might have the paperwork from the state, all approved as well.
And the association...
Do you, do you think you have...
I think the shoreline permit will take 30 days, so that may not be, and they won't approve the septic without the shoreline. So we can put a, they'll be, they'll be at the state.
Yeah. And then the, again, the road association will have to have something validating their existence, and, you know, just something formal that goes in. Yeah, hopefully, sometimes they have a photocopy of a charter, because it has to be, is, I believe, wasn't it registered as a entity?
That's what I was gonna, who is the president of the association? Or one of the board members, somebody I could contact?
But he doesn't live there in the winter, just in the summer months. But he's the one that runs the organization, collects the money, takes care of the road, makes sure that, you know, it gets filled in every year, and he grades, they all grade it. There's a guy that lives on the road that does it every year and grades it down.
But it is a formal association.
Yeah, so you're gonna need that, because you still gotta, you still gotta have the 67441, the infamous one, which is beyond us, because it's private road, so...
That's Gary's stuff, making noise. Gary?
Oh, is it beepin'?
Yes, it is.
Is that the tornado warning?
So at this point, do you guys agree to a continuance? Our next, when is our next meeting?
June 24th.
June 24th at 6:30, you'll be first on the, on the agenda.
Old Brian is the last one. It would be very helpful if I could get something out of the association to...
I'm still confused.
Once I hear back from the attorney, to talk to the Selectmen about...
What, what is its use? I'm still confused, if it's gonna matter? Are they in the process, are they in the process of going to a single family? Or is that not even gonna matter to us, whether it's a single family or seasonal?
It mattered to the inspector, so I would want clarification from him on what's this...
I think I can give you clarification.
Please.
Right now, at this point in time, we have legal advice that we, that the building inspector is, is looking at this, that, how do I want to say this? Because we do not have definitions in our zoning ordinance that when someone comes in and asks for a building permit, we are not, in an existing residential, we are not questioning whether or not it's seasonal or year-round. I will only say that there was an attempt to, by the planning board, to correct this by a, a amendment to the zoning ordinance, but because of difficulties in timing and with the Warren, it did not go before the voters this year.
Is there a difference, like, on the tax maps?
So we are not enforcing that at this point in time.
On the tax maps, is there a difference between, on the tax map, between a home or a house that's designated seasonal versus year-round? I mean, does that affect the assessment?
Some are, some are noted as such.
So that would be some questions.
Some are by virtue of the septic systems, the fact that they're not fit for winter habitat.
Right, and that was my feeling, yeah.
But it is something that is being looked at by both the building inspector and the planning board.
So there's no real guidance at this point, other than these gentlemen are gonna put in a new septic, new well?
The only real guidance for the zoning board at this point is, is it's not your issue. Sorry to put it that way, but...
Any wall that they touch, any new construction whatsoever, has to be up to...
Has to be up to code.
Right.
Which would be year-round residence.
Right.
So, I mean, I almost feel like, sorry...
I feel like if they went through it, then it would be.
Seasonal is gonna go away. I don't think it's gonna be, unless you're talking about maybe a world...
Unless a town has specific restrictions within their zoning ordinance to prevent it.
Can I, were you okay? Can you continue and talk, okay, okay. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to continue, I'm sorry, is Getman?
Yes.
And I lost your top page. 19-4 to June 24th, should be first case, at which time can we allow them at the same time to present the road frontage?
Yes.
If they have their paperwork in, or whatever, whatever it is they need to have.
Well, if you could make that motion contingent on the planning staff receiving a separate variance application for the frontage, and then we'll notice it.
Okay, so a motion to continue to June 24th.
At our expense, because it was confusing, but...
Case number 19-4, which also will need separate application for variance for road frontage. And should have, like, your road association paperwork, that would be needed for that. Yeah, more, more information.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did I say a date for receiving that?
I did.
Oh, she needs a date for receiving the, the application, because you have to post, right? You have to publish that? The frontage variance would have to be publicized? So, what's your, what's your timeframe for them?
June 3rd, 10:00 a.m.
So contingent on the separate variance, June, received by June 3rd.
All of you, if you say aye?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Five-minute recess, please.
We'll take a five-minute recess before we hit the next case.
All right, welcome back. We have case 19-5201 Highland LLC, a variance of Article 4, Section A for road frontage. The proposal lot has, the proposed lot has 135.81 feet of frontage where 150 feet are required.
Evening. As you know, this property, everybody probably drives by it a couple times a day, it's the, it has an existing white house and an existing three-unit commercial facility on it. There's two points of access to Route 4. Currently, there's no residence in the house or in the commercial. With me tonight is Mark Murphy, one of the owners of the property. So I'll go through the existing, the existing, like you said, it has, well, it has 6.91 acres. It's 285.81 feet of frontage along, along Route 4, with a single-family house and the commercial building with the two points of access. What we're proposing, and on the plan up on the, up here, the orange and the yellow, the orange notes the lot that we're asking for the variance on, it's the 135.81 feet of frontage. That would go along with the existing house. And then the yellow is, is compliant, it's 150 feet, and that would have the remaining land of about 4.88 feet, acres of land. So what we're asking for is a variance of 14.19 feet of frontage on the residential lot. It meets the lot size, two acres, just over two acres. And that's about it.
I'm assuming one of the owners is here, so divided in half, two owners, just to split it up?
Pretty much, just looking to split it up, yeah.
Really, I, the point, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but one's commercial, one's residential right now, so it kind of makes sense to separate them, to try to, because they're trying to sell the properties right now.
Gotcha.
The house is single-family residential?
Yep.
And the commercial property has, is it zoned for a certain number of businesses?
Well, it has the existing three units in it, that's...
Three unit, three?
Yeah.
Three units. And, so you're trying to sell it, because there's a sale sign there.
Both driveways are existing legal cuts on Route 4.
Yeah. Yep. Concern was on the traffic with the three commercial buildings and whether we have a separate, I know, like, with setback 20 feet here, we just went through that 50-foot on the Vegas place. Is there any criteria on multiple-unit commercial for extended frontage or setback, you know?
Large scale, but that's existing.
That's existing.
And it doesn't need to square footage by a mile.
Same on acreage, because he's at 4.88 acres?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, and my, my question was whether we were, potentially, if, if this building was, was sold, and this is down the road, so it's not so much your issue, but it, of those becoming residential, are we cutting it down to a point where it would not pass residential density for three-unit?
No, that's not your issue, sorry. As far as the road frontage variance, it's not. That would be something that, the planning board will be looking at, at the subdivision, and they could consider that, but it really isn't pertinent to reduce road frontage.
All right, I'm just looking at, seeing that we... All right, I'm just looking at seeing that we don't, that we don't see an exception come forth shortly thereafter, if that's in the potential.
Right, they would have to convert it from commercial to, if they converted it to, from commercial to multifamily, I don't think there's any way that little commercial building would work for that, but it's likely if they planned to do that, they would make it somewhere else on the lot rather than that existing building. The one you saw earlier today was a large existing structure where this is, I don't know what the dimensions are, but it's.
Probably like ten by ninety.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm seeing like the proposed.
Yeah, it's just very small.
Proposed wells and.
But it is something that the planning board could look at.
Okay.
And ask the applicant if they had plans to convert it to multifamily or whatever.
And they are existing cuts onto Route Four. Any concept of how long those cuts have been there? Probably, I would say, at least thirty-five years that those.
Well, I can attest that we're there in nineteen eighty because I used to live right there.
Okay, all right, because I was gonna say from nineteen eighty-four on, yeah.
And I can guess that it was, actually, that building was added on to, it was many, many years ago in the sixties and seventies, it was called the Powderhorn.
Okay.
It was a gun shop.
Oh, you're right, yeah, yeah, I remember that. And I noticed the access onto Route Four for the house has got great access right on. For the commercial buildings, it's kind of up and the sign there really blocks right-hand turn, so it's kinda like, it was a little, a momentary breath to make sure I didn't kinda bottom out into turning, but that's not your issue per se, your buyers would either, you know, maybe ramp it in a little better, but, so one hundred and fifty and one thirty-five, so the questions are.
And to answer your question, it's ten thousand square feet before that fifty-foot setback comes in.
All right, ten thousand square feet of building.
Mm-hmm, and he's got nine hundred.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
He squeaked under it.
Thank you.
Plus a zero.
It was a question, though.
It was a good question.
Because we don't often get a commercial property.
Better to ask ahead of time, I mean, nobody thought of it on that other one.
It's the planning board issue.
Until after, until after the fact, yeah.
Any others? All right, I'm gonna go through the five questions with you. We're looking at a variance request from Article Four, Section A of the zoning ordinance. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because.
Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, as it will allow the owner to subdivide it with the two different uses currently on the property, commercial and residential. The uses currently access Route Four safely with two points apart, different points and have for many years.
Use is not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because?
Use will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance as there are two existing points of access, one for which currently, currently on parcel, both parcels have been accessing Route Four safely and will not change with the approval of this variance.
Granting the various would not do substantial justice because?
By granting this variance, it will allow the owner to separate two uses on the parcel and place them on individual parcels.
The proposed use would not diminish surrounding property values because?
The uses will not change and therefore no diminishing effect on the surrounding properties.
The special conditions that this property distinguishes it from other properties in the area are as follows.
The existing property has two uses on it, a commercial and a residential use with two points of access to Route Four. The property has two hundred and eighty-five point eight-one feet of frontage on Route Four, and therefore, there isn't enough frontage to allow two lots for the two uses without a variance to the required one hundred and fifty feet of frontage per lot.
No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision of the property because?
The two uses currently exist on the property and nothing is proposed to change in reference to the uses. Both uses currently have safe access to Route Four and this will continue with the approval of the frontage.
And this is a reasonable request because?
The use will not change with the approval of the variance.
Any further questions?
I like that the one hundred and fifty foot was left with the commercial property. That I like, and I feel bad for the other people with the reduced, but I somehow think that's more important to have that one fifty because of cars, traffic, and all.
And I always look at a gray area and the reason we're here, and it's less than ten percent of the one hundred and fifty feet required, not that that's a standard that I go by, but it's easier to.
Something we can deal with. And also the idea that it has been, those cutaways on to Route Four for a while, because normally we'd be very hesitant to want more traffic, but, and I think it's a good straightaway there, it's not a hazard, it's, I would say, safe, I'm not aware of a lot of accidents happening in that location.
And it's also unique because we are subdividing this and we're not adding another cut into Route Four where all the time that's typically what people are requesting, so we're really not changing anything.
Right.
We're gonna end up seeing that house, so, just mark my words, we're gonna see a variance for that road, for that house lot.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it, like you said, I like the idea you're doing the commercial side, you have the four acres over there, you got two acres here, that's fine. Whoever buys that property, if they wanna build that house, that house isn't livable.
It's.
You know what I mean? So I mean, we'll end up seeing that, but, you know, like you said, the difference, fourteen feet, yeah.
But I'm not even sure we'd see a variance, it's a two-acre lot, so we wouldn't.
They don't, road frontage.
Uh, no, I think once we, once we grant the variance for this one hundred and thirty-five
footage, they wouldn't require a variance in the future to build, would they, if they were gonna rebuild the house?
No.
They've already, the lot has already been approved and the approval is given to the property, not these people, so, no offense, but it goes, it goes.
Once a variance is approved.
It goes with the property, so it's, it would become a legal one hundred and thirty-five foot shortened, it's already, once we grant it.
Well, it's not really, it's legal, but.
It's a, it's a, the zoning board is already.
They would have to do the subdivision within a certain number of years in order for that, because otherwise the variance would expire.
Okay, yeah, the variance would expire, but if they achieve the subdivision, then that one hundred and thirty, that one hundred and thirty-five foot.
Because you're giving them permission to create the lot.
Right, and it's a two-acre lot, so it's perfectly buildable.
Right.
So I don't, I don't think.
I mean, it's, besides the point, but maybe I was confused about it, but.
It's okay.
That's different, something different anyways.
No, by granting the relief.
Because that was, that was mine, my concern was, I mean, they had the one hundred and fifty for the commercial, I was happy about that, but I was thinking about the residential side, I only have one hundred and thirty-five.
Right.
Whoever buy that would have to come back for the road frontage.
Right.
But you're saying they don't have to.
No, once it's, yeah, if the subdivision goes through, then the variance covers that land in perpetuity.
Okay. I believe you got two years, right, with the variance, so.
Mm-huh.
And I got to use the word perpetuity.
I make a motion to approve, okay.
Nineteen-five?
Case nineteen-five, variance, Article Four, Section A, road frontage for one hundred and thirty-five point eight-one feet of frontage where one hundred and fifty feet are required.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think all five conditions were met. I think we should move along approving this because of the statements we had prior. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
It's still good to say perpetuity.
Yes, I didn't know that.
Yeah, because what we do is, what we do is sticks with the land.
Yeah, but I just figured.
That it would only cover existing buildings.
The way I'm looking at it is covering, okay, we approved, what was that, the lot size, right, it was up to the lot size we just did.
That was the frontage we just did, the frontage, thirty-five.
On multifamily.
So that was the frontage, so.
But the zoning board will sign this.
Sure, okay, yeah, 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 I get it.
The other one that came to that.
Yeah, so I would say that if they get their subdivision approved, that stays for another, when, anybody else go into the conference?
Did you sign? Did you put a date on?
So I'll be the only one there representing Northland. I wonder Bob Struggles going in.
We have to elect officers.
Ooh. I nominate Matt to remain as chairman.
I second that, I'll second that motion.
Vice chair can call for a vote.
Huh?
The vice chair can call.
Oh, the vice chair calls for vote, nomination for Matt Fowler for president, any other nominations?
I'll be president.
President?
Chair.
President of the zoning board, chair, don't put that down.
I'll second that.
All those, if, any other nominations, no, all those in favor of Matt Fowler being chairperson of the Northland New Hampshire zoning board of adjustment? May I have a vote?
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
I'd like to make a motion that Pam Sanderson is the vice chair.
I was gonna, I was gonna do this, I just, why don't we not?
I'll second that.
I got a motion.
We can't nominate each one of each.
Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Wait, I'm objecting.
Motion passes.
Too bad you've been overruled.
I know, it's like, seriously.
I want to mention one thing, now that the selectmen, I don't know, maybe I'm going far, but now that the selectmen, the board of selectmen has five members and we only have four, selectmen sit on a lot of boards, but we don't have one specifically on our board?
They don't pay attention to us.
They're not allowed?
No.
Because we.
A planning board by statute, it's required that a selectman sit on the planning board as one of the members, but.
Okay.
Because we're quasi-judicial in an appeal from these select board that comes to us.
I watched, I watched the YouTube videos that Gary uploads, and I'm seeing, you know, one of the board's selectmen on the planning board, and like, and they're talking about other boards they're on, like, different people on different boards, and like, why don't we have one?
I'm surprised yet that the select person is on the board.
May I suggest that the zoning board send a very strong letter, now that we have five members, again noting that we are in a serious situation by not having a full board and no alternatives.
We've been very lucky.
She's talking about the selectman.
The selectmen should be appointed.
Yeah, they should be shaking the bushes to get some people in training and on the board and.
I mean, if it's, if it's okay with the chair, I may try and go to the meeting tomorrow , so I wanna talk to him, and if it's okay with you and the board, I can mention something, if I can make it tomorrow.
That might be.
I'm gonna try, I just saw that meeting tomorrow.
More personal.
Right.
Face-to-face, that's great.
Can we take a revote on the chairman of the zoning board?
No.
Because you can have more.
And trust me, with the, with the selectmen, the more gruff and mean you are with the select board, the further you.
But it's a different board, though.
Okay, I'm kidding.
But yeah, I'm gonna try and go.
It would be nice.
I hope I can make it tomorrow, but if that's something.
You could do the public.
Yeah.
You can always stand up for that.
Did planning have to move their meeting to this week, or are they still on next week?
We're on this week anyway.
There's a confusion with the calendar, I don't know about that.
Thursday is.
It's the fourth Thursday of the month.
Yeah, so I thought we bumped us up a week.
Yeah, so you didn't have to be on Memorial Day, because the.
Right, so they're next week, they're still next week on Thursday. Is that the fourth Thursday?
Because the way the first of the month fell.
The way, yeah, the way the month fell, I'll be darned.
May I suggest that if you would like to have Matt relay that, that you just say that on the record in agreement, that he will be representing you?
Justin?
I'm sorry, what did I say, Matt? That Justin will be bringing this up if he's able to attend.
Yes, so.
That he'll run this up for the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Justin Miller at the board selection meeting tomorrow night, and to reiterate how we are a four-person board, looking for a fifth-plus alternative, alternates.
Three alternates.
With our lesson.
Mm-huh.
Any, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And what time does planning board meet?
Six-thirty, same as CBA.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I want you to know.
I'm still trying to get my brother-in-law to come in.
They keep trying to, the planning board keeps trying to hijack me.
Why don't you get him in? He'd be really good.
Yeah.
Because he knows, he would be able to take a look at the plan and the PIN and.
He can't do that as.
How often does, will he have to refuse himself?
No, that's a problem.
That's, yeah, as a surveyor, that's a problem.
But he couldn't, he couldn't in that capacity.
Right, well, I mean, he could explain what a.
Right, he could be a huge help, I don't know, but he couldn't question.
He could be an.
In the capacity of a licensed survey, he couldn't question an applicant.
Right, yeah.
That's all I meant to say.
He could be an alternate.
He could be a regular member, but he.
He could be the chairman.
There you go.
Is this what you elected you? You got a couple more years.
You don't get off that easy here.
Do you, are we all?
All the guys that left when I first started, long gray beard.
Make a motion for adjourned?
I have a motion for adjournment.
I second that.
Are we a second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.